Welcome all and welcome all to our informal session. Mr. Malucci is not feeling well, so he will not be joining us today. And we're looking forward to our first briefing in the public defender services. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cal Bain. I'm the chief public defender for the city. And I'm glad to have an opportunity to explain a little bit today about what it is we do and to reiterate how important that salary supplement that the council has been providing, the city has been providing for the last three years has been for my office. I think we all know from TV and the like, when we see on television shows, the police officer saying, "You have a right to an attorney." Well, for Virginia Beach, they're talking about us. We handle since 1973. We were actually one of the first two public defender offices in the state. I guess the trial runs initially. So for the last 50 years now, we've been handling the bulk, the vast majority of the court-appointed cases in the city of Virginia Beach. And the way that works is that someone has been charged with a crime at their first arraignment, if you will, they're informed of their right to an attorney and that they can have the public defender if they would like. And all those cases come to us. There are some court-appointed cases because obviously at times there are co-defendants that are charged and it would not be ethical for my office to be representing both of those because we might need to point the finger at each other. And that wouldn't look good if it was all happening within the same office. You might have noticed in this PowerPoint, I made frequent reference to the J-LAR study and that was a recent study done by the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee, I believe. I got a nod of approval there that I got it right, that the legislature had asked them to do to look at the status of the Commonwealth Attorney, Court Appointed and Public Defender. And that was just completed in November of this year. And it's fascinating and I would encourage you, if you have any questions at all, that you take a look at it yourself. But one of the things even I was very pleased to see is that they found no statistically important difference between representation by court-appointed public defender and private attorneys, that there was no statistically significant difference in the outcomes, which made me feel very good about the work that we do. We also, in addition, I mean, obviously, we're in court every day representing our clients, but we also do a lot of work outside the courtroom. And we've taken on a bigger, much bigger role, particularly in the last five years in terms of seeking mental health treatment for our clients and helping them get into drug rehab programs even while their case is pending. Then also just assisting with other social service needs, helping them apply for those And you may or may not know, the city now has a drug court program that attempts to deal with our most seriously addicted citizens. And although that's not technically, although it's called Drug Court, it's outside of the court. But I and several of my attorneys participate in that program and it's a weekly thing where the people in the program have to come to court every week. And we look at how they did over the past week. And the idea is that sanctions are immediate for any problem behavior. And it's, there's not, I don't know whether you all get invites to our graduations, but I really would encourage you to come. And if you don't, if you reach out to me, I'll make sure you get an invite to those graduations because, I mean, it's a beautiful thing to see some of these people. You know, typically it will take a year to a year and a half for them to complete the program. And the ones who go through have just really turned their lives around over the course of that year. I mean, some of them have driver's licenses that they hadn't had in years, full-time jobs, actual place to live that they're paying for themselves. I mean, they're so proud of themselves and we're so proud of them. It's just beautiful and very moving. But those are other things that my office does. And in that same sense, we're working now on a mental health court. I'm working with the Commonwealth Attorney and the judges that we want to do something on the mental health side, very similar to the Drug Court, where they're meeting once a week. So we're making sure that they're progressing well with their treatment and staying with it. That same J-LAR report estimates that since about 2010 to 2022, what was the number? Eighty-nine percent. They believe that there's been an eighty-nine percent increase in the mental health inmates who have mental health problems. It's a major problem. I know our former sheriff, Sheriff Staley, talked about that all the time at our Criminal Justice Board meetings and the like, that what percentage of his population had mental health issues. My office currently is 29 attorneys strong and with 13 support staff, two mitigation specialists, so they're the ones who are most helping us get people into the drug treatment and mental health treatment, three investigators, a paralegal office manager and six legal assistants. We actually have one of the highest caseloads per attorney in the Commonwealth of all the public defender offices. And we actually handled the most cases of all of any public defender office in 2022. The number there is 6,819. And that was a 516 case increase from the previous year. And certainly things are not going down. I expect it to be higher this year. So we're a very busy office. What challenges do we have? The job market, I don't, I'm going to guess the city attorney's office has found has had the same problems as well as the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I know in speaking to Colin Staley, they don't have it quite as bad as us, but they have challenges too. My most recent posting for an attorney position got two responses, only one of which was currently licensed. It's a real change from years prior. And as a result, in this past year, I have attended more job fairs put on by law schools than I ever thought was, I didn't even think there were that many. But anyway, we've really upped our recruiting in that regard. And, you know, I think we're having to start to accept the fact that we're going to have to hire from third-year law students, which is a challenge in and of itself for us because obviously when I have an opening, ideally I want to fill it now. And in order to hire third-years, you're hiring them in the spring of their third year, they can't start until after they've taken the bar exam, so they can't start till August, but they won't be licensed till October. So you're, that's an unfilled position that's going a long time. This past year, because of these problems, I actually had to hire five. We were understaffed, we were down that many attorneys of our 29 that I hired five third-year law students to fill my slots. And it was a challenging summer for my office as a result because we were so understaffed. I think, yeah, you know, the other challenges that we've seen, and I'm sure you're going to hear the same or have heard the same from Colin and his talking about the Commonwealth Attorney is just the increase in the workload. Every case takes much longer now. And the reason for that is the increase in body cam that has to be viewed. You know, ethically, we have to, just like the Commonwealth, we have to view every minute of that body cam footage. Well, that can mean even for a misdemeanor case, if you have three or four officers that respond to the scene, you're potentially looking at three or four hours of video on a simple misdemeanor. And that's a big change in terms of the job requirement from what it used to be. One positive thing that has happened in the last seven months for us is we were able to purchase, my agency was, and enroll us in the Axon software itself, which allows us to view more than one body cam at the same time if they're synced, you know. So if you've got three officers at the scene at one time, we can put up all three of those videos and watch them simultaneously, which is helping some. Then just other kinds of evidence has increased greatly in the last 10 years in terms of cellphone data, you know. And if they're under arrest, they will do a, I don't know what technical term you want to use, a dump of all the footage that's on that cellphone and that'll be supplied with us, to us in evidence and we'd have to conscientiously view all that. And then another major change has just been the change in the rules around jury trials. A few years, up until two years ago, in Virginia, we had jury sentencing. So if you took a jury trial, if the jury found you guilty, they also imposed a sentence. And in some cases, that could be particularly scary. And the Commonwealth would use that to their advantage. I'm not blaming, I'm not saying they were doing anything wrong, but for instance, in drug distribution cases, they would insist on a jury in every one of those cases and you give you the choice of pleading straight up guilty to the charge or going to jury. And the reason they did that is if you were found guilty by a jury, the minimum sentence they could give you was five years. And they have no ability to suspend any time. So you knew if you took a jury and you lost, you were doing a minimum of five years. Where if you were to plead because the judges have the ability to give suspended time and they also get sentencing guidelines where the guidelines would recommend eight to nine months, your clients would be having, they may make a very difficult decision there. Do they want to take that risk? Now we have judge sentencing with juries and it has, as a result, increased dramatically the number of jury trials that we're doing, rightly so. I'm excited about that for people because people need their day in court. And to be feel, to be forced to feel like you have to plead just to, because it's too risky is obviously, you know, a little yucky when you think about justice. But all those things have really increased the workload. And that's why it's important to have experienced attorneys. From this J-LAR report, I note that the overall experience for public defenders has decreased from 7.7 years in 2020 to 7.1 now. I'm happy to say that in my office, the average right now is 13 and a half years. We're a very experienced office. And that, when I think again of this horrible summer that we just went through, that is undoubtedly why we have, we're able to struggle through is because as you might guess, an experienced attorney can handle a heavier caseload and handle it well and competently because they don't have to spend as much time doing research. They've seen, they know the laws, they know the case law. They are, you know, one thing that you gain with experience is how to quickly establish a good relationship with your client. Those things take work, but all of that comes with experience. So having the very experienced staff I have helped us through a very challenging summer that I hope to never see again. And a lot of that, I think, is due to the fact that the city has been providing us with a supplement for the last, I think this is our third year now. It doesn't get us equity parity with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, but it certainly helps. I provided you, I think in your packet of material, a chart that again came from that J-LAR. And it was for me a gift just because it really breaks down all of the cities that currently provide a supplement. It makes it very clear that the only driver of differences in salaries between Commonwealth Attorneys and public defenders is based on the salary supplements that are provided locally by cities. You can even see from that chart that there are cities that, where their Commonwealth Attorney doesn't get a supplement either. And the difference in salaries is miniscule. And so it, I mean, I think I was saying to someone just before this, I began babbling up here, that, you know, it's truly because the city has been so kind to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in that regard, that we have the disparity that we do here. Because as that chart notes, you know, despite the generosity of the city for my office, for which I'm truly thankful, there's still a 20% pay disparity between the offices. And, but, I mean, what you've provided for this Commonwealth Attorney's Office has allowed them to recruit top-notch attorneys, which is obviously what you want. I want the same for me because that's how the fair fight happens. Right now, 13 of the 28 public defender offices provide a supplement. In the Tidewater area, obviously Virginia Beach was the first city to do so. And now Norfolk, Suffolk and Portsmouth also provide a supplement. This page here is only important because of what's on the last page really, now that I think about it in terms of the order of things. Currently, according to the J-LAR study, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office here, the supplement that the city provides them in term, for salaries exceeds what the state provides by more than 50%. And as I said just a minute ago, even with the current supplement that the city provides us, there's still a 20% salary gap between our two offices. Again, from the J-LAR report, what you would, I mean, it statistically supports what you would think from common sense anyway, that the supplements reduce vacancy rates. They actually have the data that they studied statewide in terms of comparing vacancy rates with and without supplements. And the same with increasing recruitment and retention. And I know, for instance, when I was, I referenced the five law students that I, third-year law students that I hired this year who started in August, I know for a fact that the supplement was a major factor in their decision to come to the Virginia Beach office because they all said so. I remember at the time, you know, they were, they were, as you might expect, public defender offices are competing with each other for these hires. The people that are drawn to this work, who in law school decided that they wanted to do intelligent defense. So we're, the public defender offices individually are competing for those people. And I can remember this summer, because all those kids were interviewing with a bunch of offices that I said over and over again, "I know Hampton is cursing my name right now." Because we were interviewing the same people, making offers, and I was getting them. And it's because of that supplement and I thank you for that. I think I've pretty much covered that too, except that I would note that prior to the supplement, we had really developed a problem with the, our Commonwealth Attorney's Office, for want of a better word, poaching my attorneys. And it's really frustrating because in those first couple of years of, that they're in our office, there's a lot of training going on. And I would estimate that, you know, typically it takes two years of someone being in my office before I feel that I can go, "Here's a file, go be a lawyer," without a lot of supervision. And the Commonwealth Attorney's Office was able to just snatch them at that time because it was such, you know, an impressive, impressive increase in salary, even at the starting I had, you know, attorneys with tears in their eyes, and that's no exaggeration, going, "I don't want to, but that's a mortgage payment." I mean, that difference in salary was a mortgage payment. And you can't argue with that, you just can't. I would, but you can't. And since the start of this supplement, we haven't lost a single person to our local Commonwealth Attorney's Office, although I hear that they're trying, but they haven't been able to. And that makes me very happy. And then finally, I referenced the J-LAR report with a link there. It's actually easier if you just Google J-LAR and you'll, it'll pull you to a page and you'll see it's a report on public defense, court-appointed public defense and Commonwealth attorneys. And it looks at all the problems and makes recommendations. Among the recommendations for the public defender's offices is that we look at adding more support staff to, that the view is that there is not as much of a challenge hiring support staff and that they can help carry some of the weight that we're having. What I referenced earlier there, looking at salary gaps, this J-LAR report found statistically that when the Commonwealth Attorney, I mean, when the public defender office had a salary gap less than 10%, they had an average vacancy rate of 12%. And for public defender offices that had a salary gap between 11 and 20%, and as you might recall, they calculate that we're at 20% with our Commonwealth attorneys, had a vacancy rate of 17%. And anything higher than that was a vacancy rate of 22%. And then by that same token, just looking at Commonwealth Attorney's Office, they found that if the Commonwealth Attorney's Office had a supplement greater than 30%, which if you remember here is 50%, they had a vacancy rate of 1%. And for lesser supplements, obviously the vacancy rates increase significantly, which as I said, is kind of what you would intuitively think would be true, that more money solves problems in a certain sense. But here's statistical support for that. And excitedly, that ends my actual presentation. I would ask, you know, that counsel please consider or continue to give us the $500,000. I would obviously like in the long run to see actual parity, but I'll take what I can You know, I mean, and along those lines, one thing also, and I've mentioned it in annual reports the last two years, of the Tidewater region offices that are getting a supplement, my office is the only one that's not allowed to supplement anyone other than attorneys. And I would like to, I would ask the counsel to reconsider that requirement. I mean, it was written in to the MOU. I would like that to be reconsidered. As I noted in the last report, I know for instance Norfolk provides a $5,000 a year supplement to each of the support staff members of the public defender office. So obviously that would be an additional $65,000 here. One other thing that I, and that I'd ask, and I don't know what kind of restrictions were put on in this regard when we developed our MOU. I would note that the MOU, you might be surprised that I'm saying this, gives me incredible power into how I use that money. I mean, it, it's literally completely up to me. And I would certainly think it would be good to have some restrictions because I'm certain that what no one wants is for any, in any sense, for suddenly my people to be making more than the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I'd like to have that experience for a minute, but I can understand why you wouldn't want to give me that experience. And I think it would be nice in the MOU for it to be required that we have some standards that restricts me so that, for instance, in my various levels between attorney one, attorney two, and then my supervisor levels, that it, and no sense, I mean, on my higher levels, we're still so far apart that there, I'm not concerned that that could ever be an issue. But at the lower ever, at the entry level, we're now at approaching the same starting zones. And so I think it would be good to have some, some brakes on me in the MOU. And I don't know how long I've rambled here, but if I still have time and you have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Well, Amelia.
Now, with what you said, and thank you so much for explaining all of this. And you're sitting pretty, not having those restrictions. But I know that you morally are working with the group to make sure that's fair.
Yes.
And asking to at least have some things outlined as a guideline. What I was interested, two things. You mentioned about those attorneys, their third year, and you haven't had to. Are you able to give any supplement to those young attorneys?
Well, the way the MOU reads is it's only for licensed attorneys. Well, the way the MOU reads is it's only for licensed attorneys. So although they started in August, they didn't, weren't then eligible for it, but it's, you know, you're still able to go, it's coming, it's coming. So, but it's technically not until they have received their license.
And the second, I noticed where you mentioned about the mental health and the drugs, and saying that you don't see an N, as though this is going to get higher. What's your rationale?
I'm not sure.
You mentioned that already you have a lot.
Right.
Where you have a drug area of the program, and you also mentioned the mental health.
Right.
You're also saying that in the general public, and you're saying it's going to continue.
Right.
What was your rationale, what do you see that we can, it can help us?
Well, I don't know that I would be able to say that I know it's going to get worse than it is now. What I can say is, and again, I was using the J-Lark report and their investigation, what they found is there was a massive increase between 2010 and 2022, 89% increase. And I believe the actual statistic was for inmates in the system. They found that there's an 89% increase of the ones who clearly had mental health issues that needed to be addressed.
At least that's based on your research, looking at statistics from the J-Lark.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly my experience that we're dealing with a lot more people that have mental health problems. We're having a lot more evals, that we're doing questions, issues of competence, whether people are actually competent to stand trial and need treatment first. You know, Central State Hospital and Eastern State Hospital are fully booked on their floors to restore people to, and I think, you know, we're concerned about their, the pressure for them to return people, find people competent and return them to create that space in the light too.
Thank you for your response, and hopefully you'll send us an invitation to the next graduate.
Yep, we will, I definitely will. And in that same token, you know, my office moved this past year, and it was, we had been just across the street for 27 years, and we just moved to the Landstown, the office building at Landstown, which was a dramatic move for us, but a very nice big office. We had outgrown our old space and didn't have enough room for everyone. So I also would encourage you anytime to, if you'd like to come out and check us out, please do, I'd be happy to make that happen, individually or as a group, it wouldn't matter. We're always there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to thank you for, you know, enlightening us on, you know, an obvious situation. I think there's no question that COVID had a profound impact on what went on, especially with court delays and things of that nature, but also with the increases of domestic abuse and crime and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, once again, I, you know, concur that, you know, mental health is, is, was identified as a, you know, significant problem, not only in Virginia Beach, but the Commonwealth and, you know, everybody. And that being said, in January, we're getting ready to launch the HOPE Initiative, Helping Our People Excel Pipeline. And, you know, the foundation of that is going to be coordination and, you know, getting mental health services organized. So I would welcome the opportunity to talk to you about that. But then also in terms of those that are incarcerated, part of what we're going to be doing with that initiative is also workforce development, you know, skills training, you know, getting people into a, you know, a meaningful career and everything. So, you know, let's you and I get together and, you know, figure out. Now, the other thing is too, you know, I'm a faculty over at Regent University, and they do have a law school right there. Would it be possible for the third-year students, even though they may not be able to, I'm just, you know, throwing this out for a discussion, do at least some of the background, you know, work and stuff like that to aid the, you know, the attorneys and maybe take some of the work burden off them as a kind of a stopgap measure?
That's something interesting and certainly worth looking into, yes. I mean, because, you know, actually, if they meet, if third-year students, it's called third-year practice, and it take, after they complete two years of law school, if they have also met some other specific requirements, taking certain courses such as criminal procedure and criminal law, and they're in good standing, they can, under the supervision of an attorney, actually appear in court. And that goes, that continues through their third year of law school. And actually, it continues until they get their bar results, we've learned, in, you know, October after they graduate. So, yes, there could be some real possibilities.
Yeah, but let's get together.
Okay.
Okay? All right, and thanks for enlightening, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with the city council briefings, our friends from Dominion Energy.
We've got a lot going on.
Good morning, members of council, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for having us, city manager and staff who are here. My name is Carrie Rose Pace. I am the communications specialist for Dominion Energy's electric transmission project team. I know that's a mouthful. I'm also joined by our project manager, Kyle Kino, for the onshore overhead electric transmission part of this work. We're here today to give you an update on the Coastal Virginia Offshore Wind Project, SEVAL for short, so you'll hear that acronym through my presentation. And even though offshore is in the name, there's quite a bit of onshore work that we have to do, so that's why we're here today to make sure that you understand, getting down to the neighborhood level, what is going to happen onshore for this project. Kyle, did you want to add anything before we get started? Okay, great, all right. Well, thank you so much for having us, and we'll get straight to the agenda. We're going to cover the what, when, and where, the three most important W's. And I always start out by saying, the neighborhoods that we're going to be working through have residents that live very close to where we are working, and they are the subject matter experts of their neighborhoods. I am not. So I really encourage people to reach out to me, to our project team, and let us know if there's something that we should be aware of before we start working in their neighborhood. Do people often walk their dogs, including off-leash? Are there kids nearby that are used to playing in a particular area where we will be working? We want that information because safety is our top priority on this project. So please encourage your constituents to reach out to us, let us know if there's anything that we need to be cognizant of before we get started. So the when, we have already started some of our onshore construction activities at the state military reservation property. We began underground work in November. Onshore activities will continue through late 2025. And we are committed to working respectfully with the neighborhoods and the neighbors that we are going to be working through. We acknowledge readily that construction is disruptive to the normal routine of people using their backyard, so we really want to be respectful of that while we work. Okay, I like maps, maps help orient me, I'm a visual person. For anyone who is in the audience or watching this later, that QR code will take you to this very map that I'm showing you on screen. You may remember it from the routing process prior to filing with the Virginia State Corporation Commission. This is a tool called GeoVoice. It allows us to show people, they can type in their address, like Google Maps, it'll zoom you right into their home, and then they can move around the map and see, and there I am talking, you got it. There's also some audio guides so that if people need a prompt to read them through the instructions, it'll default to play automatically, so don't be alarmed if you hear me talking in two places at once, that's normal. So, big map area, we'll start on the right and work our way to the left. So the big gray box that you see on the right of the map next to those two blue circles, that's the offshore wind lease area. That's where the 176 wind turbine generators will be installed. So that's offshore. Then the energy that's generated offshore will follow that black dotted line, which are the undersea export cables, bring that power that's generated by the offshore wind turbines to shore. The landing point is at the state military reservation, specifically at the rifle range, if you're familiar with that, south of the public beach access at Croton, that's where the underground cables make landfall. We go underneath the beach, and I'll go into more detail on this later in the slides. Then we continue underground to Naval Air Station Oceana, sorry, that's a tongue twister for me, and then we will transition to overhead. That's when we go to more traditional electric transmission overhead lines at 230 kilovolts. And then we continue out of the city of Virginia Beach into the city of Chesapeake, where we connect with the closest high-voltage power station, which is going to be a substation called Fentress. It exists today. We'll be expanding the substation footprint to accommodate the extra energy that's coming onshore. So that's the big picture. Let's look at a very simplistic explanation of how all the pieces and parts that come into play, because there are a lot of teammates at Dominion working on this in different specialty areas. So you have the offshore wind turbines, offshore substations, of which there are three, that will collect that energy generated, put it into the export cables, which are buried at undersea, and then go underneath the beach to the cable landing at state military reservation. They stay underground primarily on military or Navy property prior to transitioning overhead and continuing the rest of the way. This gives you the distance by section, so we're zooming in now from the big picture getting down to the onshore components. So it's about 4.4 miles of onshore export circuits, i.e. underground. There's different methods that we use for the underground installation that I'll talk through near the end of our slides, and then the overhead electric transmission. There are three SEVAL circuits, each of them are 230 kilovolts coming onshore, and that is just under 14 miles long, 13.7 miles. This project has been in the works for over 10 years now. We started in November of 2013. We've now had three or so good years of reliable operating data from the two pilot turbines that have been in service, and that power is delivered via distribution at state military reservation today, serving local customers here. And throughout this, this roadmap that we've been on, it's been extremely important and valuable to have public feedback. That helped inform the least impactful routing options that we could submit to the state for consideration before the final route was selected, and likewise, at the federal level from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. So the most recent update that we mailed to neighbors was this postcard. I had to kind of cover up the front of it, but you can just see it peeking out on the left side. This allowed neighbors, as we have with our cadence of keeping them posted at each regulatory milestone of what's next. So we mailed this out right after receiving the federal BOM, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. It's called a Record of Decision, or ROD. That's basically our federal permit, saying, yep, you're ready to go. Of course, there are other local permitting pieces that we are still working through, including with the city of Virginia Beach for our construction entrances, and those are on track with the permitting staff. In the right column, you'll see there's a box, and that gave people a view of the construction timeline, including the activities that have already been underway, such as staking or flagging, wetlands, the limits of disturbance, or the edges of the right-of-way, also the work that has started at the state military reservation, and other activities that will be occurring through this winter before we get started. So as I mentioned, we have already started work in the city of Virginia Beach. In November, we began underground construction at that rifle range, at the cable landing location at state military. The photo that you see on the top right, I took just last week, and they have already made so much progress. What you see there is called a pile driving machine, that's the vertical piece that's sticking up, and then the little rusty-looking pieces that are sticking up out of the ground, they're not rusted, promise, those are the sheet piles that the hammer was vibrating down through the sand, and that will help provide a protective barrier from that direct pipe, which would go out underneath the beach. As we know, it's at the beach, so there's a lot of water in the sand itself at that water table level, so the sheet piles will help protect some of that work site from the intrusion of groundwater. But we'll be de-watering throughout the process, of course, to make sure that that stays clear. And we've also continued pre-construction site surveys along the right-of-way, have had a few neighbor inquiries, as they've seen our surveyors in the right-of-way asking questions, hey, what does the blue ribbon mean? What does the pink ribbon mean? And being able to answer those questions and help people understand where we're at. And then construction materials have begun arriving. We have several lay-down sites that are within the city of Virginia Beach. There's the London Bridge lay-down site, Punggol, if you remember Punggol Airfield, we actually are using that as one of our lay-down yards for the underground construction equipment. And then we have one more that is currently under construction. The photo on the bottom, that is from the London Bridge lay-down yard, and the big silver cylinder that you see, that's called a vibratory caisson. It's basically the foundation of our transmission structures that will vroom, get vibrated into the ground, and it's actually hollow on the inside, so it's able to vibrate down into the soil as opposed to having to excavate all of that soil down and then backfill with concrete. It's faster, it's less intrusive to the environment. So our upcoming activities, December will continue, more of November. In January, that's when we're scheduled to begin construction at Harper's Switching Station, which is on Oceana Naval Base property. And then we expect toward the end of January, moving into February, to begin that right-of-way clearing for the overhead transmission. So that's our schedule. I do want to show you a few sample photos of what to expect as we get into construction. The top photos show you what look like wooden slats, that, that's wooden matting, that's pretty standard for our electric transmission. We'll lay that matting out. It allows the equipment, which you can see in the top right photo, some examples that are shown there in the red vehicles, they're heavy, so you want to distribute the weight of that so that we don't get, have as much disruption to the soil, to the vegetation that's there. So the wooden mats help protect the underground soil vegetation and disperse the weight. We'll also mark the wetlands, install any erosion sediment control protection that we have to do, of course. And then on the bottom, you can see where appropriate, we'll have signage with our contact phone number and email telling people, hey, for your safety, this area is closed, please do not go beyond this orange construction fencing, or whatever perimeter barrier we establish at each site. We'll always have detours available, which I'll go into once we get to the underground section, but when we have access points that are in neighborhoods where there's existing sidewalk, we've told the contractor to leave the sidewalk open. So we're going to, as much as possible, not disrupt the normal flow of pedestrian and cycling traffic within your own neighborhood. These are some sample boards from our pre-construction open houses that we held this fall in the city of Virginia Beach. We had great participation from along the right-of-way, both sides, so neighbors came out, and they got to see exactly what they were going to expect as we come through. The first activity is pre-construction, and one of those that I specifically want to call out is forestry. I mentioned right-of-way clearing just a moment ago, and we do have to clear the new or expanded right-of-way. About 92% of the SEVAL route onshore is what we call co-located, with either existing electric transmission right-of-way or other rights-of-way, such as the Southern Greenbelt Parkway, which was now the former Southern Greenbelt Parkway. So as much as possible, we've tried to co-locate with existing infrastructure or existing right-of-way. And so we have to make sure that we clear the way with that forestry and vegetation removal in time so that construction activities can come in. I'll go into more detail on that in just a moment, but I didn't want to neglect mentioning that. Construction activities, you can see that in the middle. The way that we work is after we get access installed and the mats are laid and the vegetation is cleared and we're ready to go, the surveyors will make sure that they have staked, the structure locations will come in and we'll install the foundations. Foundation duration of installation will vary depending upon the location. Some of the longest ones could take a couple of weeks, but typically, they're going to take a few days per foundation. The next step is pole assembly, so assembling the monopole vertically, I'll show you what those look like on subsequent slides, but they come sort of like an artificial Christmas tree in three sections. So we'll assemble the base, the middle, and the top, and each pole takes roughly a day to install. And then the last piece is wire pulling, and you can see a photo of a helicopter there, that is the plan, to minimize the duration of impact of pulling wire through the new transmission structures, and also to minimize how much we have to be in people's backyards, whether by vehicle, pulling from the ground level, we're going to pull by air, so it's faster and less disruptive, but it will certainly be noticeable if you have a helicopter flying back and forth, so we'll definitely be letting neighbors know when to expect that activity. It's not coming for a while yet. And then the last thing I want to mention before we move on- And then the last thing I want to mention before we move on from this slide, I have mentioned already that we are working very close to some people's homes and backyards, and so we have a process already in electric transmission. If we are going to have foundations and drilling or foundational work occurring as part of our construction activities, any structure within roughly 100 feet will have vibration monitoring. So we have seismographs that are keeping track in real time of how the foundation installation is going, so that we can monitor for any anomalies, make sure everything is operating the way that it should, so that homeowners nearby can have assurance that we are monitoring, doing our due diligence, and that we are prepared to respond should they have any questions or concerns. Go ahead.
So not only do we monitor with vibration during congestion, we'll actually stop if we go above levels recommended by the Bureau of Mine Reclamation, I think it is, BLM. So we will stop and actually change methods. There's multiple things that we can do to keep vibrations below a certain threshold. And also, we're going to offer pre and post condition assessments to houses in that same radius within 100 feet of the foundation installations.
Thank you, Kyle. That was a good point. Okay, so we're now getting closer on our map. So now we're down to focusing within the city of Virginia Beach on the two broad sections of construction activities. But first, we've got to talk about ride of way clearing. So we need to felled, meaning cut down, the trees that are going to be under the new power lines, once they are installed, between February and June. However, specifically, we have to make sure that the trees are cut and down by April 15th because of time of year restrictions for the northern long-eared bat. It is an endangered species. It was uplisted earlier this year, so we need to make sure that we do not cut trees when they are in pup season. So we want to make sure that we are not disrupting their normal pup processes in the trees. That will also coincide well with nesting songbirds. So we'll get all the trees down, and we won't be cutting anything else after April 15th. But we'll still be doing debris cleanup, removing the trees out of the ride of way that have been felled through June. So that's the first activity that neighbors will notice when we need to clear that ride of way. And surveyors have been out already this fall, and even this month, marking the limits of disturbance. Limit of disturbance is another word for the edges of the ride of way where we'll be working. So some neighbors may have a bit of a lull, depending on if they're in Phase 3 or Phase 2, from when trees are felled to when we actually arrive with construction, because we are starting the overhead construction in the city of Chesapeake, at Ventress Substation that I mentioned. That's that high voltage 500 kilovolt, 230 kilovolt substation that we are going to start the overhead construction with. We'll cross over the Intracoastal Waterway, working from southwest to northeast early next year, and then we'll enter into the city of Virginia Beach in what we're calling Phase 2. Phase 2 of construction starts in July of '24, and will continue working its way to the north and east. So now we're going to start getting down into that neighborhood by neighborhood look on the next map of that work. And then Phase 3 we'll come to as well as we work our way through. I do want to mention in Phase 2, we have two activities. We are rebuilding the existing transmission line that is there in the ride of way today, as well as adding the new three Seaval Circuits. Okay, so our first two neighborhoods that we get to are going to be Indian River Farms and Indian River Woods. We did have attendees from this area at our open houses. I do want to orient you to the map, though, since this is the first time you're looking at this particular zoomed view. The blue highlighted section, that's the existing transmission line ride of way. So existing transmission infrastructure today, existing ride of way, and these neighborhoods were built up on either side around that ride of way over time. The yellow that you just see creeping out in the top right and the bottom left, that's the expanded ride of way. But you'll see there's no yellow in between Indian River Farms and Indian River Woods. That's because there's no more room to expand the ride of way there, otherwise we'd be in people's kitchens or living rooms. So you'll see now why. The orange dots, those represent our new Seaval Poles, and on the next slide, I'll show you what they look like. We will have three monopoles, three separate structures, which is good for electric reliability, to have them on separate structures. So if something happened to one, you would only have one circuit go out, and the other two are still in. But in tight spots like this, we take it down to two monopoles, and we'll have two circuits per each, and remember, we have the existing one. So let's go ahead on to the next slide, and you'll see here, the top shows you the before, meaning what exists today. That's the existing transmission line. It's that lattice looking tower that you see in between the trees there. And then you can see what it would look like with the two monopoles, which are weathering steel or brown, that would be going through that exact same ride of way without the expansion. And then we have another view from the other side, same thing, the same existing transmission structure, and then you can just see the two monopoles peeking out on the bottom left over those bushes. And I do want to mention, because I think this photo is good for this, one of our access points to this view is from Indian River. And so we will remove the section of fencing and bushes that we have to use in order to get into the existing ride of way, which is typical of our construction processes. And then after we're done with this section, we'll come back and rehabilitate. So that would mean laying seed, straw, grass, making sure that it's growing back the way that we want it to, and that we replace the fence. If we can use the existing materials, great. If not, we'll replace like for like. And that's standard of anybody's property that we have to work on along the entire route. We always want to leave it as good as we found it and make sure that it's in good shape. Okay, so our next neighborhood, Highland Acres and Highland Meadows. And this is another example where you'll see that we have to squish down to the existing ride of way and use a two-pole solution as opposed to the three-pole. Again, just being cognizant of the reality of properties that are right next door to us. And this is also still within that partial rebuild section. So the little blue dots that you may just be able to see, those are again, the existing structures that we'll take down and then replace them as part of this project. So on the next slide, you'll see another view of what that would look like. There's the existing transmission tower that we are then going to replace with the two monopoles there. All right, so we're making our way almost to the end of that partial rebuild. So you'll see the blue, which is that existing transmission line, veers off toward the Princess Anne Athletic Complex and the ball fields. And you can see the last orange dot and the last blue dot in that blue corridor. That's the end of that partial rebuild, which was folded into this project and approved by the Virginia State Corporation Commission. So we're on the behind side of Landstown Road and also behind the ball fields. So we're in the in-between. We're not really in a classic subdivision here. We're well at the rear of some of these long skinny parcels, and we will be working back behind those areas. And then you'll see yellow and yellow only in the top right. That's the new ride of way that I mentioned that we have to clear for the overhead circuits, and then we're back to the three-pole solution. So this will be the last time in Phase 2, which again, is July of '24 through February of '25, that we'll be doing both a partial rebuild and the new structures for Seaval. So on our next slide, we're moving into Phase 3. So remember, I mentioned that there'd be a bit of a lull between tree clearing early next year and then construction actually arriving. For some folks in Phase 3, maybe almost a year between when the trees come down and when we arrive to do the foundations, the pole installation, and then the wire pulling. So we'll work behind the ball fields, work our way up next to a commercial project that is also happening off of Huedome Way. So we'll be coordinating with each other on that construction entrance in and out of Huedome Way. And then we cross over Princess Anne. Let me show you a photo simulation from the bleachers, if you're familiar with that. That's what it looks like from the bleachers, looking toward those three overhead circuits. On our next slide, we're on the other side of Princess Anne. In the new neighborhood, Princess Anne Meadows, I recently presented to their HOA in November, because they're a brand new neighborhood, and this was probably a lot of their first time really getting oriented to the project. Asked really great questions, so I'll keep in touch with them so that they're aware. Met with the property owner on Friday for one of our access roads that takes us back to this part of the ride of way, so that they are aware of what we'll be doing in this area also. So you'll see that we, I mentioned, we co-locate as much as possible with existing transmission corridors. So you're going to see the blue color come back into your map in the top right, and that's a different existing electric transmission corridor that we're going to co-locate with as we work our way through. Here's a photo as we move toward Holland Road. This is at Christopher Farms Elementary School. I know it's a little harder to see from their backyard, but if you look in the top, sort of the right side, you'll see what looks like an H-frame structure sticking up out behind the trees. That's the existing transmission line. And then you can see at the bottom, more into the foreground, those are the three Seaval Circuits and Monopoles that we'll be adding there. And then something interesting happens on the next slide. You'll see that we have the yellow, the new ride of way on the south side of the existing transmission line. Why? Well, we have another pre-existing neighborhood, Holland Pines. That's to the north. So once again, we couldn't expand to the north, because we'd be in people's living rooms. We're expanding to the south. But we would not be accessing that ride of way through Byron Farm North. There's an existing construction entrance just opposite of the ball fields from Christopher Farms Elementary that we will use there. And then if you look on the right side of the map, you'll see where we cut over the blue corridor, and now we're on the north side. So we, those are going to be some taller structures with more robust foundations. So that is one of those examples that I mentioned earlier, that may take a little bit longer for those foundations to be installed. They're called multi-pile, multi-pile foundations. No close residential near there, but still worth mentioning, because we do have to get up and over there. And you'll see on the next slide why we have to switch sides, because we'll be going through Castleton, and the homes in Castleton are closer on the south side of the ride of way than they are on the north side. So you can see there's that existing Castleton community in the bottom left of your map. They already have the blue existing transmission line and corridor right next to them. So in this case, switched over to the north side. We also will be avoiding placing structures within the West Net Creek and avoiding crossing over as much as possible West Net Creek when we are working in this area. And then we'll curve back up behind Pine Ridge, and there's the park there. We do not anticipate needing to access through the park or through anybody's homes at Pine Ridge, because we're going to use the existing curb cuts and construction entrances that are on Kingsland Lane on either side there from Castleton. And I have a picture of that on the next slide that shows you what that view looks like. So this is from Kingsland Lane looking to the west. You can see the existing transmission corridor there, that H-frame structure on the left, and then the three new monopoles, the three new Seaval Circuits on the right-hand side. So it's that right-hand side, that right section where we'll be pulling, taking those trees down, felling them, and then pulling any of that debris out of the way. But you can still see trees are left behind. We're not taking the entire former Southern Greenbelt Parkway ride of way here. We're just taking the section necessary for the electric transmission corridor. You will see, before we move on from this, some taller trees to the left. I don't know specifically if these would be considered danger trees, but I do think it's worth mentioning at this point because of the visual here. After we clear the ride of way, our foresters are going to come back with an engineered plan of the new transmission lines that will let them identify what we call a danger tree. Any tree that's tall enough along the edge or just outside of the ride of way, that if it were to fall or have a limb come within roughly 10 feet of the conductor, we take that down individually selectively. It's a wildfire risk and a power outage risk, because within roughly 10 feet, electricity likes to jump. It likes to find a path to ground, a path to least resistance, and that's usually a limb or a tree. So that's why we maintain the edges of our rights of way to make sure that we have a safe, safe ride of way. And now we're down to our last two neighborhoods within the city before we get to the underground section, Prince George Estates and Mayberry. This may be a familiar location because of a neighboring commercial project that has already begun in this area. We are in coordination through the city with that project to make sure that while they are under construction and while we are under construction, that we're not stepping over each other, and that we have good, safe coordination for our access as well as theirs. And you can see where we'll be cutting in between there, between Mayberry and Prince George Estates. Again, Phase 3, so February of '25 to November of '25. On this end of the project, they're most likely going to have at least a year break between the trees coming down, and we will return for foundations, poles, and wires. If you are familiar with where the school buses go home to the bus lot at night, this is where we are going past. So we're going to go just past between Dam Neck and Harper's, where this Virginia Public Schools bus lot is located, before we cross over onto the Navy property at Oceana. So this is the last section of the overhead electric transmission route, which I think we have a photo simulation on the next slide, which just shows you those last three brown poles before they cross over with the conductor into the Harper Switching Station. We have a rendering of that, so you can see what the before and after looks like. The before on the next slide is not particularly exciting. It's just trees, but you'll see that there is a rendering of that perimeter of the substation fence along the Naval Air Station property there. Okay, so that's overhead. You stuck with it for over, for about 14 miles, so good job. So now we're going to underground. I added these labels here. Clearly, they're not the exact. There's a dashed line that I acknowledge is a little difficult to see, that gives the exact route. But again, this map is fully interactive and publicly online for you to be able to see. Our underground route is roughly 4.4 miles total. The majority of it is duct bank. That's a trench construction method, and I'll show you a photo in just a moment of that. We do also have what's called HDD, which stands for Horizontal Directional Drilling. It's where we can dive deep underground to avoid sensitive areas like Lake Rudy, Lake Christine. So it gets us well underneath those resources to avoid any potential impacts there. And then the direct pipe, which is in green at the beach, that's how we get out underneath the beach without disturbing the beach itself to connect with those cables that are coming onshore there. I mentioned one more neighborhood on our next slide at Bell's Road. They are the closest residential to the underground construction route, which is shown there in the dashed blue line, which is all going to be on Navy property. But it's in close proximity to these neighbors. We did have some attendees, residents from Bell's Road at our Aquarium Open House this fall. So they are aware, we want to make sure that they stay in the loop. But this is a trench method where it's about 12 feet deep on average. Some places it'll be a little bit shallower, some places maybe a little bit deeper. But that's where we'll be installing those underground circuits to carry to Harper Switching Station. There will be traffic impacts on Oceana Boulevard and South Birdneck Road, and I'll show you that on the next slide. The circled sections in yellow, those two yellow circles, that's where we'll cross with that duct bank, that trench method, going underneath Oceana and then underneath South Birdneck. Important notes, because I know you're probably already thinking, oh my goodness, what's this going to be like? First thing, we're not going to work in both places at the same time, because those are two really important corridors for traffic to move north and south. Second, Oceana, you're probably already thinking about the traffic there for the naval base. In coordination with the Navy, it sounds like they are amenable to that being primarily overnight work, so that we're not overlapping their peak commuting times in and out at the base. So we're working with them on that, and of course, with the city permitting team to make sure that we minimize those impacts. Then the last thing I'll mention is that there will always be at least one lane open in both directions at every time that we are trenching across these. So it'll be phased as we are working across those roads. South Birdneck, once we get to that point, is daytime work proposed for that activity. And again, one lane remaining open in both directions at all time. This is one of those locations where there are some biking and pedestrian paths that parallel these roads, and that's where we'll always provide one sidewalk or the other with a detour available on either side of the road, so that there is still safe pedestrian access on either side. I mentioned Horizontal Directional Drilling. These are a couple of photos and a rendering to explain what this is. Most of this is happening at the State Military Reservation property, so it's not really going to be within the public view, but I still think it's really interesting that we're able to dive down. I think at its deepest point, it's about 65 feet below the surface, so we can really get that submarine dive down below any sensitive water areas like Lake Christine and Lake Rudy. Worth noting that there is another major road that's in this area that we're diving underneath, General Booth Boulevard. So no impacts to the ground level at General Booth Boulevard. And then I included on our next slide a couple of photos, which we also shared at the open houses, on the informational boards about what underground construction looks like. The left photo, that's duct bank. You can see they're roughly 12 feet into the ground, installing the various conduit to allow those cables to go through. And you can see that it's a well-protected trench method, and then they'll backfill it with concrete and cover it back up, so that whatever's on top, grass, whatever activity exists today over it, will be able to resume after we're done with our underground construction. There are ways for the public to get in touch with us. That email and phone number is monitored by me, a real human being, who will respond to you within 24 to 48 hours. People are starting to use it, which is great, and I really appreciate if you would help spread that word, too. Let them know that they can reach out if they have a question. If it's something more for the offshore team, then I'll pass that on to someone over on our generation side if I don't know the answer, but if it's for onshore construction... But if it's for onshore construction, transmission, whether it's overhead or underground, I'll be able to find a response and get back to the customer with that. There's our QR code, which takes you to our coastalva wind.com website where you can learn more and certainly explore that map that we just walked through in great detail. I'll be updating it with more specific information, starting first with forestry, letting people know roughly within a week or two of when they can expect the forestry crew to be behind their house. I expect to have that available publicly in January. And I'm ready for questions.
Hey, any questions at all? I'll tell you what, that was one spectacular presentation. You know yourself. Barbara.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for doing it at least twice.
Yes, ma'am.
... very, very good response from people into detail, and we appreciate that. When you're doing the tree cutting, you're doing it level with the ground, or is it ex...
It's all the way down level. That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, getting the roots out and so forth. You're leaving everything at that point.
Yeah, so in general, along the transmission line route, we would cut it flush with the ground and not clear and grub and disturb the root bed. There may be some isolated locations where you have to put a new structure, or if they have issues building the road where the mat doesn't sit stable and it's not safe, or we have to do some minor grubbing. But in general, no, it will just be cutting flush with the ground and not disturb.
Although the mats stay in place.
They will stay in place for the duration of the project. So, once they get laid and they will follow forestry, that mat road will be there for the duration of the project until we clear and pull wire. So, kind of on the western end, starting in City of Chesapeake, those mats will come up faster as the wire is pulled and we're done needing access to the right-of-way there. So...
But as far as re-sprouting, you're not interested in the fact that they would possibly re-sprout, or you wouldn't want them to because of the lines being there, or have you looked at that aspect?
So, I mean, we still have operation maintenance that we will continue to do post-construction of the circuits, just like we would any of our other transmission right-of-ways. So, we will address those. Once we cut them flush, we will continue to address the right-of-way in perpetuity of the lines operating.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else familiar?
Yes, thank you for sharing all of this. If you go back to page 31 to do with that construction timeline where I have been on all of your zooms with the C-val and so forth, especially from the historic point of the African-American settlements along there. And there's Sea-Tac that comes right in there.
Yes.
On that page, you just mentioned that you will be on one side with, like a pavement of, and on the other.
Yes, for the pedestrian. Yes, absolutely. So, I believe it's on South Birdneck where there is an existing bike ped path. So, we will make sure that when we are working on, say, the southwest side of South Birdneck, that we will allow on the northeast side of South Birdneck a bike ped path to be available with a safe crossing at a signalized intersection, and then vice versa as we work our way across.
That's good. So, at the rec center, all of this will be there for people to understand, not only in this form, but if there's anybody that needs sign language or something, so you have that whole process.
Yes. And we held office hours at Sea-Tac Recreation Center back in the fall when we were holding our public open houses. I was there from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM one day, and so I absolutely plan to make myself available through the project so that people can stop by when it's convenient for them. Not everybody can come in the evening, so it's good to be available there. And it was a great space. Everyone at Sea-Tac was wonderful and welcoming and let us use the refrigerator for lunch. So, that was great. But yes, I'll make sure that we continue to return to Sea-Tac, make ourselves available.
Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Once again, thank you for very insightful. These presentations take a lot of work, but you folks have been doing it for a long time now, so it's nice to see you to come to fruition.
Thank you. We appreciate the time.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duhany, I think you're up next.
The Chair of your Oversight Board for the Bus Adventure Program and also Lisa Pico, the Project Program Manager.
Hello. Seems like I was just here. I'm going to give them a minute to get the slides working. I'm Jeff Waller, Chairman of the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board. This includes, the referendum includes seven master projects with 21 projects identified along with 10 support projects, and then 10 other projects that were active when this implemented, so it's 41 projects. The resolution calls for the board to report back to the city council every three months. I was last here in September, and I'm back. Since September, city staff has given us briefings on the procurement of design-build contracts, which the city is going to use pretty extensively through the bond referendum. And we got a briefing from the operations people on ditch maintenance. The slides sync with my comments, but it's hard for me to read while I'm talking, so I want to make sure I'm on the right slide. Some of the highlights in the October status report that you receive are some of these have been active. The Windsor Woods Tide Gate project near I-264, the Bow Creek Stormwater Park Phase 1 project, a lot of dirt activity, removal and shaping, going up and down Rosemont Road. I've not been out there. South Plaza Trail and Presidential Boulevard drainage work in Windsor Woods and drainage work at Old Forge Road and Red Line Road in Windsor Woods. Also, Lake Bradford dredging is scheduled to finish this month, so that will be done soon. When I was here in September, the board recommended using the median communication people to support an increase in public awareness, and the first video is complete, and you can access it from the Ripple Effect website. It shows how a stormwater pump station works, and there it is. That's a little slow motion. This is Rosemont Forest. It's a 70 cubic feet per second pump station, which is 2 tons of water per second. And when you watch this, just keep in mind, this is 70 cubic feet per second. There's two pump stations in Windsor Woods, one 700 CFS, so it's going to be 10 times this amount, and the other one is, I think, 1,200 CFS, so it's almost 20 times this amount. And then we have bigger pump stations planned up in the Lake Bradford area, Shore Drive. I think there's like three or four of them up Shore Drive. We're going to have at least one in the resort area. So, that's a lot of water that we're going to be doing. And if council's not been out there, council members have not been out to see this, you may want to take a field trip. It's a fun field trip. Don't stand downwind from that because it'll knock you off your feet. Also, the city has, Jacob's Engineering has completed a visualization model tool, so you can see the impacts of different rain events, sea level rise, tide events, and before and after project completion. This can be viewed from the main Virginia Beach website. There's some good advice when you sign on to read the instructions before you jump in and start using the model. Lisha Pico of Jacob's Engineering is going to provide more information on this in a couple of minutes. And the city has also accepted and appropriated a $25 million brick grant for the Four Shore Drive projects. And in the future, we're going to take a field trip hopefully to Lake Windsor and see the Tide Gates construction, also the Bow Creek project. So, some of the requests that we have, and these are not new, when we have something pertinent to you at our monthly meeting, we'll let you know so you can come and join us. If you have community meetings, if we can come and help in any way, let us know, and we'll be there. And soon, there'll be a resolution coming to you from the city attorney's office so that we can get two non-voting student members on our board, and then we can roll that over year after year. This was, this is one of the slides. We kind of accumulated several questions that we've asked of staff. Staff has answered these. So, if you look at these going, "Why haven't they've gotten answers?" We have gotten answers, but since we started in October '22, we wanted to learn, "Well, how did we choose these projects? What are we going to get out of these projects? How are we moving forward with these projects? What's the benefit?" And there's been a lot of information that we have received from staff, and that has helped us out. Our board meetings are open to the public, 2 o'clock, the second Tuesday of every month in town center at the Economic Development Office. We have a website accessible from the Ripple Effect website, and an email address is posted there. And as always, we continue to look forward to being a part of this project. So, with that, any questions of me?
Any questions at all, Worth?
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Waller. Thank you for your work and the committee's work. And as layers on to this board and committee, I did see the ditch maintenance presentation by staff, and I encourage everyone here in the public to perhaps take that, somehow we can get that in front of the public, because it's really important that we get this right. I believe staff does have this right, but this is an ongoing annual maintenance program that's almost as important as the program of the bond referendum itself, $567, soon to be a billion dollars, I guess. So, I really encourage you because it's interesting science, but also really important to the city. And then, secondly, at my community meeting, staff has done a great job on the flood program in my district, but so I really do encourage you, as Mr. Waller did, to take a look at your projects and then ask staff to come present because it does resonate with the public. Thanks.
Hey, anybody else? Hey, thanks a bunch.
You're welcome. And here's Lisha Pico from Jacob's Engineering.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Good afternoon. Happy to be back this quarter to give you guys an update on how we're doing with this program. This is the slide I like to show you every time I'm here, just to show you how things are advancing. So, our goal is, as every time I come to see you, fewer and fewer things are going to be on the left side of this graph, and they're going to migrate towards the right and be completed. So, you can see there's a lot of stuff going on in the middle. So, we have a lot of projects in design and preliminary engineering and a few under construction, and we've completed three projects already. So, there's a lot of work going on. And in the green, when you have a moment to take a look at your, this is in your board packet, it just kind of tells you what's the next milestone for those projects. So, not only do we have a lot going on now, it's going to keep going on for a little while like this pace. And you can see, since I last spoke to you in June, these are some of the major accomplishments that's occurred under the flood protection program. Procurement-wise, we procured a design engineer for the Church Point Thoroughgood B&amp;P project. We've also secured a construction contract for the Sea-Tac Drainage Project, and we've selected a design-build team for the mega Windsor Woods bundle with the Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes, all of that design-build projects. As far as design, we've kicked off design for the West Neck Creek project. We've gotten kind of technical documents ready to go for a design-build procurement for the Lake Bradford project. We've got 90% design drawings for the First Colonial Road and Oceana Boulevard drainage, and two projects have reached 100% design, Elizabeth River Floodplain Restoration and Back Bay Marsh. And as I said, we continue to complete projects, and since the last quarter, we will have completed the Lake Bradford dredging project that Jeff mentioned as of later this month that will be completed. So, there's a lot of things that we're hitting. These are normal milestones in a project's life, so we're advancing things very quickly and on schedule and in accordance with what we said we were initially going to do. Now, on our budget, last quarter, I presented to you a benchmarking approach, or you could see the variance in total program cost over time. Haven't had a big change since then. The projects are still in design or still in planning, or the program level estimate is still a 5% variance. So, right now, we have eight projects in planning. 18 projects have advanced to at least a 30% design, and our current program budget is And the reason I don't have all of that benchmarked yet is because, like I told you, eight projects are still in planning, and these are the eight. Four of them are going to be finishing their planning and get to 30% design in 2024, and that will be the Punggol Ferry Road project, the Eastern Shore Drive projects, Vista Circle Pump Station, and then the design-build for the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes bundle will reach 30% next year. And then in 2025, we have four projects that are going to finish planning, and that's the Lake Bradford Design-Build Project, the West Neck Bridge, the West Neck Creek Project, the Central Resort District Project, and the Church Point Thoroughgood B&amp;P will have finished its planning. So, we've still got a lot of ways to go as far as getting all these projects ready to go, but things are moving progressively forward. We haven't slowed down. We haven't had a hiccup that's worthy of your attention at this point. So, I'm very pleased that it's a very brief update for you this quarter. We're just continuing to move forward. So, I wanted to just spend a very few minutes showing you what we mean when we say flood model visualization tool, exposure tool. And this is something that Mr. Duhany asked us to do right off the bat when we first started coming and talking about this program, and just to make sure that people will understand and have a way of seeing what will be the difference after these projects are done. What's the value we're bringing to specific neighborhoods and locations, not just all the engineering and the words that are in the report, but what does that look like? So, this is disclaimer page, and I wanted to put that up here just so that nobody's going to go out and buy a house based upon the results of this tool. Make sure these are modeled simulations based upon specific ground conditions and specific rainfall patterns that nobody can predict will ever happen. So, we're reasonably certain that these are accurate, but I don't want anyone to say that I got more rain than that tool showed, you know, 10 years from now. So, it is for educational purposes. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that, and it's just to foster a better understanding of the program. So, I'm going to walk you through how to use the tool. There's four steps. It's really simple, and you can get these in the instructions that are right up there on the link. So, this is posted up on the flood protection website. So, the first thing you're going to do, you're going to select a scenario. Do you want to look at flooding that occurs from thunderstorms, normal thunderstorms, or do you want to look at impacts from wind and tide? So, you're going to be able to figure out, how complex do you want to look at this? The second step, you're going to select a rainfall. So, first, you're selecting a flooding type, and then you're going to select rainfall. In engineering terms, we design things to a 10-year design storm and a 100-year design storm. So, for the, all the flood protection projects have been designed for a 10-year design storm, meaning that they'll be limited to three inches or less of water on the road, the crown of the road, after the project's finished. They're also going to have no flooding of structures for a 100-year design storm. So, those are pretty robust parameters and will significantly improve the situations that you experience today. So, you can choose, do you want to see the 10-year storm, which obviously occurs once every 10 years in theory, the 100-year storm, which is a mega storm that occurs once every 100 years, or if you want to compare the rainfall that happened during Hurricane Matthew. That's also been uploaded into the model, so you can kind of play with it and see how the neighborhoods are impacted for different storm events. Then you get to select step three, which is your sea level rise. Now, you have a really nice report that's uploaded on your public website that talks about the future conditions of climate change for this area. It's called the Sea Level Wise Adaptation Strategy Report. I would encourage you and all the residents to read it. It's not a hard read. There's a lot of visualization. There's a lot of graphs. There's a lot of pictures that show you what does this mean, schematics that show you what it means, not just words. But for the tool, you can say, "I want to see what this is going to happen with no sea level rise. I want to see what happens when we get a foot and a half sea level rise, and then I want to see the impact in my area if there's a three-foot level sea level rise increase." So, those are what you get to select. And then finally, you get to select the area that you're looking at. You can select citywide and get a map of the whole city, or you can drill down to a project level. Now, the only project that model that we have uploaded into the tool right now is for the Eastern Shore Drive projects. So, in the future, we'll continue to upload more models as they become available. But right now, I'm going to show you what it looks like for the Eastern Shore Drive project. So, when you select all your parameters, you're going to get a screen, a graphical screen, aerial, and you can see in the yellow border, I'm not going to try to use the pointer because I'll mess up the remote, but that yellow outline there is this project's boundary. And that's where we're... and that's where we're going to be looking at. So that's what we're talking about. And then after you push "See My Results" as a button on the model, you can see the before and after. So it might take you a few minutes, because you're looking kind of far away, but when you're looking at your printout, it's a lot easier to see. The before side, within the yellow boundary, you'll see a lot of dark blue flooding, and that's more than two feet of flooded water documentation. So you don't want dark blue in your area. That's bad. So as it transitions from medium blue to a teal to a pale to a white, you can see a significant improvement in this area. There's no more dark blue and very little blue at all located in the project area after we finish the improvements. So you can zero in on the tool. You can zoom in. You can look at, you know, specific streets, and all of that is available to you when you're using this. And one of the other interesting features is a camera. So they show you a camera that you can see a specific intersection, and so you want to drill down, and there's a little camera icon, and you can click it. And you can see, this is the before shot that's on the left for the scenario that we looked at, and then here's with after the project's implemented. So this was for a, I think it was one and a half feet of sea level rise, a 100-year storm event with tidal and influenced water. So that's pretty dramatic, and that's a pretty good visual to see what's the value of this investment that this council has requested and/or directed the city to advance. So we're going to significantly make a difference in Virginia Beach with these projects that you've authorized. So that's all I have for you today. Are there any questions about any aspect of the flood protection program you have for me or any of staff?
Any questions? Amelia, then Barbara.
I just want to say congratulations, congratulations to the council for investing in this, because now we can see our ROI on it. And thank you for presenting so comprehensively clear. Thank you.
Barbara?
I don't know. I think maybe I was looking for more on specific projects. We do have to talk maybe not so much about the bond projects, but I really want to talk some more about our flooding projects and this whole thing with the bond issue. So I don't have specific questions about the bond, but some comments, maybe this is the time to do it. October of 2016 was when we had Matthew, and from that point on, we immediately went heavy on our flooding projects. I'm looking at Toni. Toni's been around, and she wrote most of the reports. But we used to get just about every month, or every two months anyway, a rundown on all of our major flood control projects and so forth. And I have, just happen to have this Stormwater CIP for the six years of 2019 to 2024, which would be this budget year. And looking at all of these projects, I would really be interested in knowing which ones have been completed, because I think that's what our public really needs to know. And of course, it's not just the flood mitigation projects, but it's the operations and maintenance projects that we promised we would do as well. I know last year, when we had this update, I asked to have a report on what had been completed since, up to that point, since Matthew. And so we did get this compilation last year of projects that had been completed since July of 2017, and this year would be another year added. And I think this is the kind of thing that our public really needs to know more. I think you were talking about it a little bit, Worth, in just what has been done to the whole system, the flood system, not just our bond projects, but the whole system since Matthew, so people would know what to expect. And I think there's the thinking that maybe we haven't done as much as anything, but I think when you look at the listing, we've done a lot, and there have been a lot of projects. And just looking at the ones that were in the CIP that particular year, I know the ones that I've followed the most, the Asheville Park and Sherwood Lakes from Matthew have both been completed. And I think it's important that people know these things so that they have a little more confidence in what we're doing. And, you know, we've escaped the hurricanes, but some of our worst storms have been in the spring, like the Ash Wednesday storm. So these things can happen anytime. And so I would really like to have an update more on just what all have we done in the stormwater initiatives since Matthew that people can understand. But then I was a bit disturbed to read this that was in our packet about the, part of that resolution where we promised that we would not change the stormwater fee rate for several years, and it looks like we maybe are having some difficulty with that. I think we do need to discuss that. This resolution, we passed, the council passed, and then the public gave us the go-ahead based on that resolution. It kind of seems like we're coming back and undoing different parts of it, and I don't think that's going to go well with the public. So I think this presentation is not all we need. I think we need a much broader look at just what we have been doing with flooding, with the operation and maintenance and CIP projects, as well as these bond referendum projects. But I also think we need to look a little bit more at this concern that we, this is the data that we got, this five-year forecast on the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund. I'd like to have some more presentation about that. I don't want this to creep up on us, and we find out that we've got to back off on that promise, too. That's not going to sit well.
Yes. Oh, good. Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, before, council continues. I want to give Elgin an opportunity to announce a personnel change.
Okay. Outstanding job.
I would give my responses from Ms. Henley also.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the last time this presentation was given, we advised you at that time that Phil Pollan, our city engineer, would be retiring at the end of October. Phil did retire, and he's off doing all kinds of fun things right now, still trying to get him to come back at least part of the time, but he refuses to do so. But I am pleased to announce that we advertised, and we were able to fill his position internally. Toni Utterbach is the, has been named as the city engineer. Most of you are very familiar with Toni's work. She's been working on the flood protection program, the Sea Level Wise program. We have the utmost confidence in Toni, and we look forward to all the great things that she's going to do.
Just real quickly, Ms. Henley, your comments are well timed about the status of the projects. In your monthly report that we produce, since it goes to your packet, we do say what each of those projects have been, what's the status of the current status. But we were just talking that we're going to do a year-end program summary with the December report. So the report that you get that talks about the December progress is going to have what's been done to date for this flood protection program, including the operations. And we've been working very closely with the operations team to get hard data from what they've been able to accomplish with the funding that you've given them. So we're going to be able to quantify it better than we could before. So, but we are working on that. Like I said, we wanted to do a year-end review, but we'll make it a year-end, program-to-date review on status of all the projects that you're talking about. So, but if you wanted to know, is the specific ones, they're in the report, just a line item in each of those monthly reports.
Okay, anyone else, Worth?
Mayor, and just to follow up on Ms. Henley's comments, I think we'll ask Mr. Waller to come in and give us a report on how we do maintain our ditches and canals and what we're doing in addition to the bond referendum projects.
Okay. Anyone else? You know, Hurricane Matthew was certainly a wake-up call to a lot of us that really changed priorities in this city in a major, major way. And I just want to say that, you know, we took on the responsibility since then, and, you know, even with the bond referendum, you know, we kind of retooled ourselves a lot more. And I think, you know, once again, I think that Barbara's right, that we got to demonstrate to the public that, you know, for a number of years now, we have been really proactive, you know, in accomplishing a lot of things and moving toward the direction that, you know, we were to do. And then even though the money in the bond referendum, you know, with the terrible inflation we had, you know, drove the cost significantly, I think we remain fully committed, you know, to our pledge. And, you know, but also realize, I think, quite frankly, that was just kind of a down payment, that we're going to be paying a lot of this stuff in perpetuity going forward. But once again, I think that it just shows that we are honoring the commitment, we realize that, you know, the priority and the, you know, the really need to approach this aggressively. Yep, Barbara?
I do have one more comment. We were able to put an awful lot of money from the American Rescue Plan money into stormwater maintenance, and that allowed us to do a lot of things that we maybe wouldn't have done if we had not had that money. We have to spend that by a certain time. Is that time up, or will we still be using some of that money in this coming year?
We're, Councilwoman Henley, we're still using that money in the upcoming year. The city has to encumber the funds by December 31 of next year, and we have to spend it by December 31 of 2026. So we're tracking along on time to get those moving in the right direction. We sent a report out to council about the state of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, too, that kind of gave council a sense of where we're moving towards with the projects.
Yeah, we get an awful lot of these rule papers, and it's awfully hard to keep up with 200 or 30 topics every week, but we're trying. But the public doesn't see this, and that's the problem.
Anyone else? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just, I wanted to follow on to something that council members Remick and Henley touched on, and I saw the stat, I think it was 300% increase in one of your feet that was dredged since before the referendum was passed. And there are a lot of really other impressive statistics that show the lengths that we have gone these past several years with the investments we've made. And also, just to follow on to Councilwoman Henley's point about the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was maybe several years ago, there was, there was some time and effort spent taking a look at how maybe this isn't the most equitable way to tax people or to charge them fees, because residential, every residential property, regardless of the amount of impervious surface, is basically charged the same. So if we're going to take a look at this, I would, and I think I recall seeing that report that was done and the analysis that was done previously, but that might, it might be a good idea to maybe dust that off again and take a look at it, because I know there were some suggestions that, at least in year one, were, you know, I guess, impact-neutral to people. But I think if we're going to take a look at this, that we really ought to, we ought to be fair to people. And I also see that commercial properties are eligible for stormwater fee credits and adjustments for having onsite stormwater management and reducing the reliance on the city's stormwater system. And I think residential properties should also be able to have some adjustments for, you know, for turning a driveway into a, you know, pervious surface or rainwater gardens or, I mean, those sorts of things. So regardless of the rate and its forecasted imbalance, if we're going to be taking a look at this stuff, I think we should, we should really dive into it.
Rosemary?
Josh, we have talked about that in the past. It didn't really, hasn't really gone anywhere, but we talked about residential getting some credits, like for having the rain barrels and the rain gardens and those sorts of things. And I think it went to the housing committee, but it has been looked at. It doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to look at it again, because actually, you know, there's some other cities in the state of Virginia that has some programs like that.
I remember seeing that report. I would really like, I mean, if we can dust that off and maybe circulate it, that would be great.
So the report we sent you was really just for situational awareness. A decision point's not needed by council at this time, and we don't foresee us needing it in the upcoming budget that we're working to present. But we can work as part of the briefing cadence that you all have to prepare a briefing for some time for you all next year to look further into this and discuss this, discuss this issue. And we can dust off the studies that were done on other alternatives of how you can structure the fee.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council liaison reports. Anybody?
There's an update from the Transportation Advisory Committee that there were, as the numbers came in, so 3,000 people who were able to participate in the bikes at the oceanfront, the holiday lights. It's the longest LED light tunnel in the U.S., and because it has such good numbers, you know, there's active effort to continue these kinds of events down at the oceanfront for families and individuals to get out of their cars and get out and to, on their bikes or on their feet and enjoy these kinds of things. So kudos to Parks and Rec and to Active Transportation and to all the folks who keep those kinds of events going.
Amelia?
To do with the housing, someone come in and present it was a smaller organization, but they do the work of pulling together to help in the neighborhood with people who have small projects and have gotten to help those people for whether it's insulation, carpenter work, they're doing that, they share it with us. Another thing that was brought up, I was asking about this land, like how recently we've had churches, and they're mentioning that they are working with churches who may have a lot of extra land to see what is possible as we look at affordable housing and attainable housing, that something could be worked as we're looking for. You know, we have less land, but some churches are hurting, but have all this land. So they have an idea of working with some of the churches to address how they can use some of that land and, you know, make a deal with them. So that was interesting as one way to address homelessness.
You know, that's the type of innovative thinking, I think, we have to use going forward. Barbara?
Well, the Open Space Committee met yesterday afternoon, and they, of course, have spent a good part of time since over the last year just getting reformed, because, of course, we had utilized the spending in the first phase, and they sort of went dormant for a couple of years. But I just want you to know, they've spent a lot of time in really looking at the criteria to look at and so forth. And actually, at yesterday's meeting, they had three or four sites that have been suggested that they are now looking at. So I want you to know that they're going to be moving forward, and we should have some good things coming out of them. But I just have to say that we have some really good boards and commissions, advisory boards, working for us in the city. And I think that boards and commissions group that the clerk worked with for a year or so, in really getting all of our boards and commissions working on the same way, I think that has strengthened the boards. I know the ones that I'm liaison to are looking forward to this week with also the Green Ribbon Committee and the ITA Committee. Every one of them are so good, and we're so fortunate that we have all of these volunteers working for us so hard, we couldn't begin to pay these people what it would cost. We go out and hire consultants. We've got these volunteers working for us and all of these advisory boards, and I hope we will start really utilizing them more, giving them specific questions to look for us. And I think these annual reports that we just got, I've really enjoyed reading them because they've told me a lot about these committees and what they're doing, and they're doing an outstanding job. And I just think we have a lot to thank our members for and all the work that they do. I know the ones that I'm fortunate to work with are just outstanding, and I'm sure yours are, too.
Anyone else at this point? What about council comments or innovations? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your discourse, but just thinking out, council, as we start to think about next year, typically around the beginning of February or second part of February, we have a winter retreat. So just want to get a sense from council, is it still? So just want to get a sense from council, is it still your desire to have a winter retreat? And then typically, we decide on the topic. But then I'm just considering the conversation council had yesterday about as part of the budget, including scenarios on how we can do reductions, you know, and to see what that looks like in terms of the impact to the city and possibly the schools as well, down to a revenue neutral rate. Is that something that council would want to probably for staff to prepare so we can discuss as part of the retreat?
You know, if I could give a recommendation, I think that would be, you know, critical, given the nature of, you know, the budget challenges that we've had. Would also give the public the opportunity to view some of our discussions and deliberations, you know, about that. I mean, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be challenged, and it's a good idea to talk to each other. Yes?
We want to do a community conversation ahead of the retreat, like 10 years past.
You know, that's a possibility, too.
I mean, it said we would.
What does that look like?
Well, I mean, it could be different ways, but each council member could invite like 10 people, have roundtable discussions. And we've done one specifically for the budget in the past, too. Or, and, and reach out to the Boards of Commissions and invite them. There's, you know, there's different ways. And of course, anyone wants to come, you know, it's a public meeting, you can't preclude anybody from coming. But we've, Barbara will tell you, we found it really helped, especially going into the deliberations of the, of the retreat after hearing from so many people. And we have time now to, to plan it.
Had it at the convention center, we had roundtables, and we had, you know, someone facilitating. It was good.
Record. I think considering, so it's going to take us a while to gather the information from the departments on what a seven cents reduction can have to their budgets, right? We probably will be able to get it to you all mid-February because we've released the budget. We're planning to release the budget to you all probably March 19th. And then I'm thinking if we can have a retreat with you all, February 13th, 14th through the 15th, or around that timeframe in those days. You all can, yeah, you all can hear it. And then afterwards, if it's something where, after you get the information, if you wanted to solicit public feedback and input on those, we could probably have something for the public to see what it is, what it would look like in terms of impact for the city. Y'all can get that feedback for you all to consider as part of the budget process.
Yeah, I think it might be, you know, both of us to have the retreat first and then, you know, then come up with, you know, the possible solutions and then bring the public in for discussion prior, you know, prior to the vote. And then, but don't forget, we're also going to have the public, you know, sessions on the budget anyway. So that'd be an enhanced public engagement. So does everybody agree that we should go to a mid-February retreat followed by the public, you know, you know, input session?
I think ahead of the retreat is a better time to have, to hear from the public.
But we'll have the plan, we'll have multiple plans that we need, though, to find out. I'm just saying. Yeah, we can go, you know, I'm open either way, but I just think it might be prudent to have it after we have our discussions and come up with a couple of scenarios that could be evaluated. Jennifer?
So the retreat that we're planning for, for the winter, if you're saying we need to hear from the public ahead of time, is that to identify priorities that we should be considering as a council? Or is it related to the budget? Because if it's separate from the budget, I think it makes sense to have a conversation with more people from the community. That way we can hear what are some of those priorities ahead of going into a retreat. And so I think you're asking us, what's the topic of the retreat or what's the theme? And it could be the budget or something else.
It, the, the retreat can be whatever council wants it to be. I just proposed, since you all asked us to take a deep dive on what a seven cent reduction could look like, that we give you that information at the retreat, and we can discuss it as council, given a discussion and guidance to staff. That could be another option. Other option could be, I'm looking at priorities. I would say that council did go through a community input session on your focus action plan, and you all just previously adopted a focus action plan on your priorities. You know, we could probably seek more community input on that as well. But staff really just started working on those priorities that you all adopted as well.
Hey, Barbara, then Josh?
I, I tend to think January is a better time for the community conversations and let us know at least we're thinking in the same lines with the public. It doesn't take much to pull it together.
Hey, Josh?
I, I could see, I could see the benefit of both ways, but if, if, if we're talking about a potential up to a seven cent reduction, I think, I think we, we probably need to see what that looks like from you so that we can go out and show the public what it's going to look like for them. Because, because if we, if we do it the other way around, we can, we can get, we can get public input on a rate reduction, but, but they, nobody would really be informed on what that would actually look like. And I think a lot of people will be surprised at what some of that might look like. And we'll probably have feelings about that.
Or?
I agree with Mr. Shulman, but also in terms of the seven cents reduction, not to creep into so much work, but I would also encourage us to consider what does a two and a five cents reduction look like in addition to a seven, not the seven and seven?
I concur with that. That's why I'm saying we would have, you know, the multiple scenarios that we would discuss first and then perhaps go, you know, Jennifer, I think you're right about the, the focus group should, you know, the, the public input should be on establishing their priorities and where that would fit into the multiple scenarios that we're doing. Okay, should we go around the table before and after? I think that would be prudent at this point. Just tell me, just, you know, tell the body, you know, you think we should have the public engagement before or after our retreat? Jennifer, we'll start with you.
Well, if we're doing the budget exercise after, so we can hear from what those numbers look like and then have a conversation with the public would like to do.
And, you know, then that way, you know, they know that we're going to be, you know, downsizing to a degree, the degree to be determined. But once again, then they can give a set of priorities. Okay, this is what we really think that we need, and that way we can, you know, get the things out. So you're okay with after?
Yeah, I think we need to hear it from you first so that we can then share with the public and find out what their priorities are.
Brenna?
I think it's important, oftentimes the public wants to be a part of those retreats and discussions. And afterwards, they provide much-needed feedback on what they would like to see. So I would say after the retreat would be preferable.
Barbara?
Well, I think we need to know we're on the right track. I do it before, but there's nothing wrong with doing it before and after.
Rosemary?
I agree with Barbara. Because we could talk about what Jennifer talked about was hearing what their priorities are. So we talked about during the retreat and then...
Yeah, I think that might be a thing. What about, you know, having something before and after? And the other thing is true, even during our, you know, our retreat, you know, let the public know that we, they are invited to come, and, you know, we do live stream it and things of that nature, and that we can have a more robust, would, would the direction be to have, you know, something before and after?
Just to be clear, what I heard from the Vice Mayor about before is that the council members would have town halls and hear from the public? Or what do you want from staff to prepare for the before?
I think basically, where, you know, Rosemary was talking about, where we just had, you know, each person has, you know, gets somebody from every district reporting at tables of 10, you know, with a facilitator and a recorder. And then there's some, you know, leading questions that, you know, is that correct?
We, we've done it at the convention center before.
And how you want that themed? Do you want that themed specifically around the budget? Or themed about just general priority areas?
Maybe just general, what do you think, Jennifer? The general priorities you were talking about, what, what people think are important in their government?
Yeah, what are priority services, priority needs? And if we're thinking about what gets cut or what gets funded, we have an idea about what's important to people to maintain and what they're willing to.
And I'll tell you, an interesting exercise is asking the public, you know, given the circumstances, what are you willing to, you know, what do, what do you think should be cut? Or, you know, would revise or something like that? And then we go into the retreat and, you know, and, you know, once again, we'll have the, you know, a lot of public hearings, you know, regarding the budget and everything.
And, and when do you want that, a Tuesday or a Thursday? Do you want to take a workshop in February, in January and do that?
Do you want to do a workshop day for that?
That's got a lot on your agenda, though.
It's the evening.
It's the evening.
So you want to do a Thursday, then, Thursday evening?
Yeah, let's do a Thursday evening, that'd be okay?
Yep, so we'll call a special session for a community conversation or a community dialogue or something?
Week in January.
Conversation on, hear from the public on their priorities.
Okay.
So they're Thursday for 18th of January. You all meet the second and, no, sorry. You meet on Tuesday the 16th.
And I'm here again, Mayor, I apologize. I'm here again, priorities, what was, what's been thrown out there is priorities as it relates to making budget decisions. So is that what the theme of these conversations are?
Yeah.
So we're okay, the retreat is going to be focused on the budget, right? And looking at the various options to get to seven, including if council wanted to do a two or a five or four or three, right? So the pre-retreat discussion, it's okay if that's themed around the public prioritizing. If council were to go and make reductions to the budget and the services, where would the public find that tolerable?
What's untouchable?
Yeah, you know, helping us determine, you know, the, you know, the level of the priorities of each of the central. Barbara?
Well, I just think hearing from the public is important. We don't have to tell them what they've got to think. Asking them some two or three, what we usually do is have two or three questions that each table talks about, so the budget can be one of them. But another question could just be, what do you think about the direction of the city? Or what should be our priorities? But I know with our retreats, we used to always start out by naming our successes. And that might be a good place to start with our community conversations. What do you consider our successes? We don't talk about that enough. So we certainly don't have to come up with the questions tonight, but I don't think it, it should be just telling them what they should tell us or they should hear from them.
No, it's very open-ended. And, you know, and then, you know, the council members get to bounce around from table to table and, you know, do a kind of active listening and things of that nature.
I think he'll enjoy it. We, we always seem to get a lot out of it.
Okay, any other council reports? Okay, Sabrina?
More of a, more of a celebratory comment. And I'm sure many of you recall when Attorney Don McCary and Mr. Doye came by and made a presentation regarding funding for a tackle football program for our city. And it was a very, very good presentation, and they talked about the funding that they needed. Well, I was sent a follow-up report, and it's interesting. Would like to thank the council for investing the funds that they invested in that program because it's interesting that they had almost 400 players in their program, and they're ending their, their season with a banquet. It's tonight, it's, it's at 6:30. Of course, we'll, we'll be in council. But I think it's always important that we see the benefits and the work that's being done with, when we invest in programs like these. So again, the, the banquet is this evening at Princess Anne Country Club, but they had 400 players, and their senior team went to the championships, the city championships. They were 10 and 0. And one of the interesting things about it, because I attended the banquet last year, and you see young men from all walks of life and how this program has instrumentally helped them grow, become better individuals. And it is, is just really truly a tremendous blessing to see what these programs do for our youth. So I just want to really commend the body for investing in that program and to let you know the accomplishments of that team. And hopefully, we can continue to support them because they're doing phenomenal work.
Yeah, just to let you know, Sabrina, at, at many Walmart the other day, a gentleman came up. He was one of the coaches of the teams. He said, thanks for doing that, but I, but I just lost to Don McCary's team, so, you know. That was great. Chris, what do you got?
Councilwoman Wooden, thank you for bringing up, because that was one of my requests in reconciliation that actually came when the $150,000 for each of us. And I believe Vice Mayor Wilson, I had requested the $25,000 for the Great Neck Football. I wasn't aware of the banquet. I appreciate you bringing that up. If you could forward that on, and I'll reach out to Don McCary, because that $25,000 did come out of that reconciliation process, and King Grant actually also received $25,000. So yes, it was a collective effort, but also there was some intention on the part of District 8 to ensure that that program continues. So thank you for bringing that up.
Absolutely. And before you came on board, we invested in that program. And that was something for me that, that I really advocated for, and certainly appreciate the work you did for the current budget, but yes. And that's why I think the whole body, because prior to that, the investment was made as well.
Yes, ma'am. And then I had a comment, Mayor Dyer. Councilwoman Henley brought up a good point. A lot of times we get information that comes in our packet that we don't necess, the public doesn't necessarily see. And then it can come to the agenda, and they wonder where it came from. In this past week, we received a memo from the city manager, and we've had a lot of discussions this year about budget impacts, the difficulty in fundraising for some of the groups. And the letter came from the VAACC, Virginia African American Culture Center. And it was a specific request from Dr. Angela Gregg, a member of their Board of Directors, requesting a construction deadline extension of 36 months to start and finish, finish the proposed construction for the Virginia African American Culture Center, in which previous councils had given 4.8 acres of property to, to dedicate to the organization. And I, I believe the MOU and the DE that was in place, they were supposed to commence construction by December 1st, 2023, so this past week, and complete construction by December 1st, 2025. And they were, it was cited that due to the pandemic, including continuing challenges related to interest rates and construction costs, which was kind of what, what necessitated the extension. And so I wanted to reach out directly to the manager to get some information as we're going to, this is going to come up in January. And I'm, I'm thankful that the Dr. Gregg had mentioned that it was at the request and direction of council member Dr. Ross Hammond, that serves as the founder and chairman of, of the VAACC. And so, Mr. Manager, if you would, could you reach out prior to that vote to, to determine the total amount of fundraising for 2019 through 2023? And specifically, the bona fide pledges, donations, and loan commitments specifically for construction costs, development, and operating expenses? Thank you.
Okay, Amelia?
I do have some comments. This week, we had the Great Illumination, which went very well. This was the 20th anniversary of the Town Center that's been built it. And we had close to 4,000 out there for this celebration. There was no incident. And Mayor Dyer, myself, and several others came out for this, including Councilman Taylor and later on, Councilwoman Wooden. Well, I want to thank Director Jenny Evans-Cox for the Town Center person and the CBDA and CBDX business leaders who were out there trying to make sure everyone had a wonderful time and Santa and Miss Claus. And we heard the Grinch also showed up. But yes, that was something. So everyone really had a great time for that. And then the other one I would like to start and ask Councilman Shulman to elaborate more. But we had our first joint Community Day meeting over at the Renaissance. I will ask him to share a little bit more about the staff. And I will also share that the Western Bayside Community, and it was led by Kelly Jackson from Virginia Wesleyan, who also did a presentation. If you could share a little bit more, and we can thank some like Lauren. If you could share a little bit more and we can thank some like Lauren and Hughes and Taren Denham and Drew.
Drew saved the day.
He saved the day. So please go on from there.
No, we had a little tech, thank you, Councilwoman. We had a little bit of a technical glitch and Drew, Drew's always awesome. So, and I know you, you get them every month, Councilwoman, so. But it, it was, Renaissance Academy is a great host, it's a great venue for, for having, for having our town hall. We had folks there from Neighborhood Preservation and Zoning and we talked about homeless outreach and we talked about recycling. And what, and I've, I've gotten a little bit of feedback from, from some of, some of our constituents and they, the one thing that they really liked about it was, it was an example of how we, how we do work together and how we can stand up there and support one another and, and be supportive of things that aren't just necessarily in our district, but touch on multiple districts and in fact citywide initiatives. So I thought it, I thought it really, really well done, well done town hall, but kudos to the staff and Taren and Lauren. They certainly, they certainly did a great job and they always do. One, one quick one, I, I wanted to just throw a shout out to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation. On Friday, I attended from 8:30 to 12 at the Brock Environmental Center, a conference about advancing land conservation in Hampton Roads. And it was a, it was a collection of environmental thought leaders and government, government officials and nonprofit representatives literally from all over the region, talking about future projections of wetlands loss and tree canopy loss, sea level rise and some of the pressures that we're seeing from, you know, from, from development. And we had people there from the, there were people there from the Department of Wildlife Resources, the Planning District Commission, the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, Virginia Coastal Zone Management Program and, and folks from Newport News and Middle Peninsula Planning District. And there was a gentleman talking about something interesting, interesting that they were doing with the Chesapeake landing. And there was another gentleman there from Newport News Green, or it was a lady from Newport News Green Foundation talking about how they were buying residual, it was a small piece of property all over the city and, 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 you know, making gardens and they, they take care of it. It's not, it's not a city obligation and with signage and neighborhood beautification opportunities. So just a really good collection of people, including our own Julia Hilligas, who, who's our program coordinator from the Ag Reserve Program, which is, which is a program that, that is a model, an example for, for the region and for the country in terms of the success and the strategies that are employed. So I just want to give Ms. Hilligas a nod because she did a great job and, and if there's any other updates or follow-up coming out of that, I'll be sure to let you know.
Great, and if I could just, you know, follow up on that, I think one of the things we know that there's a sensitivity to, you know, the filling in the wetlands, you know, with the public out there. And I just think it may be at the, you know, council retreat or something, we have a discussion about whether, you know, we could have a policy about that because I think it's a concern about the neighborhoods and, you know, we had a recent application, but then I'm in another neighborhood, I see signs out.
Shadow lawn.
You know, shadow lawn and everything. You know, hey, listen, I know we are running out of some land, but by the same token, you know, we have a wetlands board that they, people don't, don't build too close to wetlands, much less, you know, and I know they got new engineering things, but I'm not sure that is, you know, I think it's a discussion we should have, you know, in that regard, how we want to handle it. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. Passing around a draft ordinance, thanks to Mr. Rod Ingram. Last Tuesday, staff, planning commission staff presented to us on the current status of short-term rentals, STRs in our city and specifically about enforcement and registration. And so this ordinance, which I'd like to consider for next Tuesday voting session, there's six sponsors, please allow, thank you for the sponsors. But this addresses a task force, a creation of a task force to address these issues and then come back to us with recommendations. It would be, at this point in a proposal stage, eight members. It would address enforcement and registration of short-term rentals and how we can improve up our game in that space. So thanks for your consideration.
And you can put my name on that there. Anybody else? You know, I just want to mention something about what a wonderful weekend we had and the spirit of people. And my friend and colleague, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond, in her district at Town Center the other day, it was in fact a tremendous turnout. And you can feel the vibe of just joy and happiness. And then the next day, we had the Hollywood, you know, we had the parade at the oceanfront. The rain held off on Friday, but really came down a little bit on Saturday. And in spite of that, when you went down, the crowd did not diminish at all. But, you know, Amelia, you were there.
Yeah.
And, you know, there were a lot of umbrellas out, there were a lot of children out and everything. And I think it just kind of reflects the spirit of, you know, Virginia Beach, you know, was a true community, you know, engagement. And, you know, it's very heartwarming to see that we're launching into, you know, the holiday season, you know, which, you know, such a wonderful spirit as we see.
And one thing about the city I forgot, there were no incidents for either event. It went smoothly and we are the 10th safest city. So we have something to be proud of.
And I think the safest the city ourselves. We're doing well.
Yeah, the safest ours.
Rosemary?
I just want to mention that with the holiday lights, because it's in my backyard, this year they did something differently where they started the, the whole program at 10th Street rather than down on Second Street. And it's made a huge difference in the traffic on Atlantic Avenue. It used to be, would back up all Atlantic Avenue, it was hard to get across and, and to deal with all of that. So whoever thought of moving the entrance down was a, was a grand brilliant idea and I just want to compliment them for.
In the room right now, Mr. Bill Kelly and Lisa Bleakley, Resort Management Office.
Great idea. I think it's made a huge difference.
That was Lisa and Bill, Resort Management Office.
All right.
We have the best staff, no question.
All right, good news. Okay, how about our agenda review?
Well, I have some more.
Oh, more good news, okay.
As of right now, we don't have any speakers except for open mics. Wow. So on the agenda, on the ordinance resolutions, does anybody have any issues with anything that they would like?
I'm gonna abstain from 5 and 13.
And on 13, is there anything to do with Dominion Energy?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
And this looks like the festival commission is going.
Not today.
We're gonna need to appoint that commission quickly, so please be thinking about who it is that you would like to bring to the table. And that's it.
Okay, anybody else? No, okay. Moving along. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, and that would be District 2 and District 3. And then public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or the scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29, and that would be Spring Summer Festival, Another Spring Summer Festival, Project Football and GB Sports Center Convention Center Management Proposal. And then legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.23711A8, and that would be the 531 legal issue. And then personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary disqualifying or resignation of specific public officers, employees or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.3371A2, and that's council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Say move.
Second.
Officer Henry? Officer Remick?
Uh.
Officer Rollt Taylor?
Aye.
Officer Laugh?
Aye.
Officer Taylor?
Aye.
Officer Gooden?
Aye.
Officer Ryan?
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into closed.